We're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clark?
Dr. Chase.
Present.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
And Ms. Young is here.
Here.
All right. That brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Brookpoint High School Navy JROTC. Would you please stand, please?
Colors. Op. Black face. March. Color. Op. Get it there. Color.
Oops.
Ready, go.
I pledge allegiance.
Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color. Color. Ready, go. Right face. March. Color. Forward. March.
We'd like to thank tonight's color guard cadets, Cadet McFadden, Cadet Rugama, Cadet Figuerrel, Cadet Foster, and Cadet Wallen, and their instructors of the JROTC program at Brookpoint, Captain James O'Keefe, and Petty Officer Michael Tucci. All right, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month that Dr. Chase is going to read for us.
Whereas mental health is a part of overall health, and whereas mental health sustains an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change, and whereas one in five youths between the ages of 13 and 18 live with a mental health condition, half of whom develop the condition by age 14, and whereas roughly one-half of chronic mental illnesses begin by the mid-teens and three-fourths by the mid-20s, and whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas through public education and civic activities, Virginia remains engaged in the promise to address the challenges facing people with mental illnesses, and whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County School Board hereby designates May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Stafford County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to citizen comments. Dr. Chase is going to read our information item.
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairwoman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedure outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. No one has signed up for public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the board, please come forward, and there's a sign-in sheet on the ledge there that you can sign after you've spoken.
Paul Waldowski, eight picket lane. I'm the chairman of the 2030 Cicadas, and my subject is about anything I really want because I'm a senior citizen. But let's start with the 5% raise to the school system. And let's inform the public that 5% of $226,000 is $11,300. Last week at the board, I think I announced the lame duck session starts in 181 days, but Siri didn't answer me. She gave me the general election when President Trump will become a two-term president, even though I don't like more than one term. So it must be 174 days till the lame duck session. Look out in case you decide in the room. I've also attended those meetings about 2040. And like I said to the board, it's like stormwater management. If you don't take care of the storm pond, Mother Nature's going to fill it up and maybe she'll make it into a rainfield. It's a little late to worry about 2040 because growth is already here. The problem here is it's not managed. And what was interesting to me was the facilitators were from Albemarle County, which is less than half of the students we have in Stafford County. Now, what could they possibly bring to Stafford County in terms of growth? Oh, they had someone else from the Commonwealth. That was the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I informed them that common sense is not common there either. Now, Albemarle has like 723 square miles, and yet we only have 270 square miles, but people forget 55 of that is corniceau. So we only have 215 square miles. So I keep on encouraging you to keep on comparing apples to sour apples to grapes to sour grapes because this county is unique. It's different. And until we get four school board members and a member-at-large, unless you want to become the town of Falmouth again, or even the town of Aquoyia, which is now 50 years old.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Hello. David Sousa, 3 Bella House, Court 22554. I've actually come to talk about potentially later start times. My mother works for the Health Department here in the county, and she shared with me this interesting article from the CDC that suggests that high school students start at least by 8:30. But I understand that a bunch of kids, including myself, actually have after-school activities, so that will infringe, to put it lightly, on those activities. So I'd like to say, maybe consider 8 o'clock because that will help. And the CDC report actually says that it will help improve academia. And I understand that there are two main issues with doing this. There's the bus schedule, and quite honestly, I have no, I don't, I'm not very informed on the bus schedule. There's no quick fixes for that, but I understand that we're also starting the school year earlier, which I support because in AP classes you have more time to prepare for those exams. But at the same time, I think we should, if we were to do a bus schedule shift, that would also work. There's no quick fix solutions. And I understand that the other kind of argument of, oh, well, teens will just sleep in later. Now, I see an opportunity here because of school board members, if you push the school start times back and kids still go to sleep later and wake up later, you, they have no right to complain. Because now we do have, technically, we do have a right to complain, but then if you do this, we don't have a right to complain. So the board essentially has immunity in this issue, and I suggest you take this opportunity. But I'm just here to advocate for my fellow students at Colonial Forge. I'm a junior there. So that's all I have to say is at least consider the possibility of 8 o'clock. It's not a terrible change, but we're already changing things up next year for the better. So maybe if we're changing the start times, we could also change the start date, we could also change the start time to improve academia, which if, I would assume Stafford County Public Schools, you know, cares about the students, and that's just one thing for you to consider. Thank you very much.
Could you please sign in on the, there's a paper there? Name and address? Thank you very much. All right, anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and come to the board reports and comments. First, the Student Discipline Committee report, Dr. Chase.
On May 9th, a committee of the school board met to consider three student disciplinary matters. The committee suspended Student A for the remainder of the current school year with the Phoenix Center for Innovative Learning being offered. The committee suspended Student B for 30 days and placed the student on probation for an additional 15 student, school days. And the committee continued the expulsion of Student C and continued to offer the Phoenix Center for Innovation Learning Regional Program.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to board member comments. Ms. Hazard, would you like to start us this evening?
Sure. It's always fun to come to a meeting where we get to recognize all the accomplishments of our students, and I always like to think that, of course, this is just a small portion of the many things that are going on in our schools. So in that vein, though, I would like to issue our congratulations to the cast and crew of Mountain View High School's Mamma Mia musical for their numerous award nominations in the Riverside Awards for Excellence in High School Musical Theater. So congratulations to those students who played the parts of Sky, Donna, Bill, Rosie, Harry, and Sophie, the featured dancer, the lighting, crew, stage, hair, makeup, choreography, and direction, and costumes. They were nominated in all those categories and will be part of the awards banquet at the Riverside Theater on June 10th. So as I said in a post that I made, you don't have to go very far for outstanding fine arts in Stafford County. You don't have to go north or south in the spring. You can certainly have many opportunities here. On a additional note, I just wanted to share my concern about additional special ed classes at various elementary schools and its impact on capacity. Still have the continued concern that the information provided to the board during the redistricting process was flawed and, or has changed after the decision, which could result in vastly different capacity figures than what was shared with the board. I would ask that we consider that any new classes added to the schools, at elementary, be added to the schools with adequate capacity. I hate saying that because part of the reason I felt like we went through, part of this exercise was to not always put it where there's, not to put those programs where there's space, but I think that the integrity of the board's decision is diminished when schools are given additional classes when their projected capacity is over 85%. So I just would like us to really look closely at where these new classes are going because I think that we are strained and we need to be in the schools that have the capacity now. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Decatur.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back. We had a little break from each other. That was nice. Just real quick, I visited the New Moncur School this past Friday, and what an amazing space that is. I'm so excited for the children who are going to be able to receive their education in that space. The construction of the school is just created for learners. It's simply phenomenal. If you haven't been there, I suggest you get over there. A couple of the cool components of that school, that portion of the construction is exposed, so it really like, you know, it's going to make them really think. They can look and see how something is held up, and there is a window open to the data room where they can look in, and evidently there's going to be like some, some cool lighting to get their attention, but just the setup of that school is phenomenal, and I, I'm really happy that we were able to consider our population and the children who were going to be utilizing that school when, and I'm thankful for the, for the people who were on the board when, you know, that was initially, you know, all considered. So, so thanks to those members for, you guys did a really, really phenomenal job just creating a school that has really made for learning. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur. And that was the ed specs that were brought forward to the board. So there's a lot of people on the, you know, and on the staff that contributed to that as well. Ms. Young?
I don't have anything except that we had that roundtable with Senator Tim Kaine, and it was about ideas about how to bring about more teachers because of our teacher's shortage. But Maddie left. I was just excited with Maddie, and I wanted to, you know, talk to Maddie before she just ran out of here, but it was very exciting, and we had some great ideas. We had lots of representatives, Germana and Dr. Kizner was there, he opened it up, Dr. Chase, and of course Chairman Healy, but we had a good, fun time, and I think they took a lot of our ideas and plan on implementing some of them, I hope, to get more teachers in our area. So it's about bringing teachers that look like our students. It's about diversity and making sure that the teachers understand the cultures, and it's all part of this discipline issue that we're going to be talking about later. So I'll reserve some time to discuss that later when we talk about discipline.
Ms. Egan?
Thanks. I'll just start off by saying thank you to the Brookpoint PTSO for another successful after-prom. I know there's not too many people here tonight. Hope some of you are watching. Our PTOs do an amazing job with ensuring that our, our students, when they go out for prom and are buckled in for the night and are doing safe and fun and good things instead of being out and about doing not-so-good things. So kudos to the Brookpoint PTSOs and all our PTSOs who have put on after-proms at all of our high schools. So thank you for that. This is graduation. It's upon us. It's here. This is a little bittersweet for me. My oldest, who is the impetus for this crazy participation in the school board stuff and my own PTO and PTA experiences, he's graduating this year, and I'd just like to take a minute to thank everyone who was involved in helping me get here. You know, the Childfind team was where we started, the folks of the pre-K program. My son is a product of that. The Stafford Elementary School staff, the staff at Stafford Middle School, and the staff at Brookpoint High School. Again, hopefully some of you are watching online. I couldn't have done this without you, and this is not just a victory for my son, this is a victory for all of us, and again, thank you for helping me get there. So thank you.
Mr. McCosker. Dr. Chase.
Okay. So I wanted to thank the Rappahannock Area United Way for holding a reading day for our Head Start and Virginia Preschool Initiative classes. I thoroughly enjoyed being one of the readers, and the United Way had collected book donations, and each student was given an age-appropriate book to take home with them, which was wonderful. I want to thank Dr. Mark Smith, the principal at Stafford Middle, for giving me a tour of Stafford Middle at the end of April. I saw students very engaged in science and shop. Then I was back at Stafford Middle last week for Senator Kane's visit to discuss the teacher shortage, and I just wanted to say Stafford Middle did a wonderful job hosting this event. Finally, I attended the Board of Supervisors CIP meeting yesterday as an observer. Staff indicated we no longer have a joint county school CIP process. However, the supervisors were concerned that the CIP that the school board approved in November had not been ranked by their technical review committee. They asked their staff to redo the rankings before the end of the month in order to include the school system's most recent CIP from November. It was also noted that we need to have the CIP for next year's rankings to the county in August. Given that we no longer have a joint CIP, we may want to rethink our CIP process. Do we still want to have it done by members of the Fab C? So that's something we, we need to discuss as a board.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. In addition to the recognitions for the roundtable last week, I wanted to add the Stafford Education Association. I see Mr. Peabody and Mr. Watkins are in our audience tonight. They both participated, and I think the governor was very, I keep calling him the governor, geez.
Senator.
I'm like back in time. Senator Kane, former governor of Virginia. I think the senator was, was very pleased at the, the variety of participants that were involved and, and, you know, the points of view that were, that were made. I think they were well taken, and he's going to add that to, you know, other information that he's gathering throughout the Commonwealth and, you know, hopefully be able to, to give us some, some help on some reappropriations of bills. He, he made a point that was, was very interesting. He said, "We only do this once every five or 10 years, so we have to do it right." So that's why he's out there trying to get all this information so that when they, they make this change, it's going to be there for, you know, perhaps a decade before something else is done. But he also mentioned, you know, his, his wife, who was, you know, very involved in educational activities in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and how committed they as a family were to, to education, and talked about his family's education in the public schools in the Richmond area. All right, Dr. Kizner, your turn.
First, I do want to recognize that this is Police Appreciation Week, and we have a very good partnership with our local law enforcement, and I want to make sure we recognize it formally. I do want to recognize a lot of our students. I don't know how many were there, but I would say at least 150 students came out Saturday for the Meals of Hope food drive that was located at Mountain View, but we had children from throughout the division, and they, and a lot of staff and volunteers, YMCA, other programs, and it was, I was there for a couple of hours. It was pretty amazing. Like Irene, I did attend only for about 45 minutes of the after-prom, and I started off food drive and ended that night at the after-prom, and it's a lot of work, and, but providing kids a safe alternative is worth every, every ounce of sweat, so I do want to thank them. I do want to, for the board to know, this is an open invitation. I need to do a better job to give you more time, so you're aware of this. So we had our, we have a business advisory group. This year, we chose to visit our programs. It's different when you're just meeting in this building, have a discussion. So we had our first visit of North Stafford High School CTE programs led by students, and Thursday we'll have our second one at Stafford High School led by students, and we, we ate lunch in the cafeteria with the kids. This one, I'm not sure if we're going to do that, but we're still going to have lunch there. So it was, I do want to thank Shereen and her team for putting it together. I want to also let the board know that we've been working with Mary Washington and Germana to things that you heard at the roundtable. I think you know that I'm on a state committee that's looking at five-year universities turning into four-year teaching universities, and there's many reasons behind it, but one of the reasons is to get people to look, to be teachers and not feel like they have to go for a five-year graduate program. So anyway, we're working with them to look at some type of articulation transition from high school to either two- or four-year college and come back and teach for us. And that Maddie, that student we speak about is an example of a student that's in that Teach for Tomorrow program. That's at two of our high schools, and if we could expand that opportunity. I do want to make one comment, and I, and please, I hope this is not interpreted the wrong way, because I've been involved with it, and I know the effort and discussions and deliberations. The Special Ed Department, when they put these regional placements, it's not like they just wake up and say, well, there's a lot of thought and deliberation. Our school division, and I know we all think this, has to be remarkably opening, open for children with disabilities and their families. And we have had, since that February presentation, at least three additional, needs for three additional classrooms for children with low incidence disabilities, and I think that's terrific. These are children and families that are moving into our community, and they want to be part of the Stafford community. So I recognize the comment that was made. I just want, because I know when I hear the word flawed, it gives the impression those people behind it, that they weren't, do their job right. I would just say, we did come to change two, but remember, we have over 30 programs for children that are placed in other schools. So I feel somewhat of an obligation to share that for the staff that worked to make those decisions.
Done it. All right. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent, 801, 802, and 803. Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There are no action items. So that brings us to information. Now, we have a number of items on here. I'd suggest if there's any questions about these, I mean, if you want to address them this evening, you can, but otherwise you can send them to Dr. Kizner because these will be coming back to us at the next meeting for action. 10.01, approval of a payment in the amount of $190,286 to Tyler Technologies, Inc., for enterprise resource planning, annual maintenance, and support costs using budgeted FY19 operating funds. Any questions about this item? And if there's, are there any on here that we've been asked to move tonight? No? Oh, good. All right. All right, so no questions about that. We'll go on to 10.02, approval of continued participation in the Virginia Corp Hybrid Disability Program.
Madam Chair, I do have a question on this one, or more of a comment potentially, so you don't have to jump up. I note that the write-up states that this cost is an unfunded mandate. When I add up, and I'm not the math major, this would be about a $412,000 unfunded mandate if I add these two together. So in light of the email that I sent to board members in general, would this be something Dr. Kizner and staff, I really have this, would this be something that the Legislative Committee might raise as an issue to the Virginia School Board Association? If this impacts all school divisions about this hybrid plan, I would need to understand it because I don't, but is this something we could maybe work together, bring this for, would this be a money-saving? Does that make sense? Because we, what we trend to bring to Virginia School Board Association is something that impacts all school divisions, and if this hybrid system has imposed unfunded or problematic costs to the division, so I guess...
Let me...
Does that make sense what I'm asking?
It makes sense, but there's another way I would also look at this. Teachers that were hired after 2014, I think, have a reduced pension benefit. As we already have been talking about a couple of times tonight, in the last few months, it's difficult to get people to think themselves as a teacher. And the state, as a way to reduce their obligation, reduced the pension benefit that new teachers receive. So as one way to address that, to soften the, the lower benefits, they came up with this Hybrid Disability Program. So maybe the angle I would maybe offer the school board to consider is going back to Level One, or whatever they call it, Tier One VRS, which I'm under, and anybody that was hired before 2010, which is a much benefit than those that were hired afterwards. As a cost savings move, the state really reduced and made it less attractive. I don't know if you saw the article, I think in today's Washington Post. I read it somewhere. I was going to say the Washington Post, I'm not 100% sure. How many teachers are retiring to realize how not great their pension is? And those teachers that are just starting their career right now, I... And those teachers that are just starting their career right now, I hope they're looking at other alternatives to save their money. So anyway, I'm not opposed to this hybrid disability program. I'm more opposed to the notion that they reduced the benefits of teachers that got hired after 2010 than they did it after 2014. They even made it worse. And I could just tell you, as a father of two of them, I got both of them that got hired after 2010 and then one who got hired after 2014. And they don't have the same level that I have and most of us who are sitting in this room. So I think that's a better discussion to have with VSBA.
Follow-up question. Is this hybrid, the one and two that are below it right here, the hybrids that we're discussing right now, are they hybrid to the VRS and the Virginia Corp?
Well, look.
The determination that's being made in this agenda item is whether or not we remain with VACorp, who has been basically our overall provider for the short-term disability program that's offered to hybrid employees. If we stay with VACorp, even though they are changing their provider to Anthem Disability versus us trying to do an RFP on our own, to stay with the Standard, who is currently working with VACorp to provide this service. So we're just simply suggesting that we stay with VACorp, who is currently the overseer of our program, rather than trying to branch off on our own.
How long are we tied into if we go forward with this proposal?
Well, actually, it has been almost five years, and so VACorp is doing the RFP another five years, and we would be able to make the decision as to what we wanted to do again at that point. In discussing this with VACorp, with Anthem, even the Standard, they anticipate that since more states are moving to hybrid retirement programs, and I agree, Dr. Kizner, unfortunately for the beneficiaries of those programs, that there will be increasing numbers of short-term disability providers. The biggest key for us, I think, at this point is to stay with a group that provides a fairly big insurance pool because it does help to keep the rates and the costs down if you have a larger pool, rather than us breaking off to our own RFP and having a pool of our own.
And is this long-term and short-term?
It is short-term and long-term. Once an employee who has been approved for short-term disability of up to 125 days has exhausted those days, and they are still deemed to be disabled, they can go into a long-term disability program through Anthem or the Standard, whoever continues to oversee this program.
Does that answer your question, Hazard?
It's just more, I didn't oppose this item. It was more the concept behind it, and I think in line with, and unfortunately, I couldn't attend the roundtable, but if we're really talking about, wow, how are we trying to get additional teachers and young teachers and everything else? If this is another hurdle that we need to be bringing forward legislatively, then I think that will be the approach. I don't know if the board, at least, I'm willing to kind of, or legislative, to get some handle on it. Unfortunately, we have to have whatever we would want to submit to VSBA, and I know Dr. Chase has talked about one, that maybe we can get together, but we would have to, as a board, conceptually go with that. But I'll at least work on that, and we can with Dr. Chase's, and if Dr. Kizner agrees, I'm going to have to get a rocket-docket understanding of sort of hybrid.
What is the time period? Did you, it seems like you mentioned that it was like quick.
Yes, we have to, I believe by the first meeting, actually, I think it's going to be the meeting in May because I believe the submissions are the eighth, and I'm sorry not to have it right in front of me. I think if we have the concept at least fleshed out, I would ask that then the board, I'm sorry not to have information, Anne, but this seems like to me something to be bringing forward to, in general, our legislators, that it's not just the impact on the employees, it's also if you're, put your money where your mouth is, if you're really trying to recruit and bring in people, they need a decent retirement system.
I know, and speaking with one of our investment reps, I said, "What would a new teacher have to invest in their hybrid program in order to retire with the same benefits, say, we as Plan One members have?" And they said they've kind of crunched the numbers, and, you know, all of us are obligated to contribute 5% of our salary to our retirement program, and then the school division matches that with, you know, approximately 16% overall for all employees. And for the hybrid employees, they have to contribute that 5%, but then they can contribute up to another 5% that then is matched 2.5% by the school board. He said that to equal what a Plan One member would get in retirement, that young teacher would probably be within the first year or two, need to be contributing an additional 5% on top of the 5% that's obligatory. And you talk a brand-new teacher, that makes a difference in their take-home.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mr. Young, did you have any other question?
No, I'll reserve.
All right. No other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to 10.03, approval of the purchase of Grade 2 Open Court Reading Foundational Skills Kits in the amount of $178,141.95 using FY19 budgeted operating funds. Any questions about this item?
Just a quick question. Is this an upgrade to what we already have?
So last year, we purchased kits for grades 1 and 2.
Okay.
So this would continue that instruction into grade 2. So students that received it in grade 1 this year would continue into grade 2 next year.
And then grade 3? Am I assuming that it continues or?
So this was part of our dyslexia plan. In that plan that we submitted to the state, we indicated that we would provide Tier 1 instruction kits for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. So that is the plan currently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I, just one question. Is there any specialized training that the teachers have to receive as part of this autism, or is it really a self, like a program on this curriculum? Do the teachers get special training on it?
Yes, they do. So our K-1 teachers received that last summer, and our grade 2 teachers, pending approval, would receive that this summer.
Appreciate it, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to 10.04, approval of change order number 1, contract extension to Waste Management of Fredericksburg, Virginia for $120,366.10 using budgeted FY20 annual operating funds for refuse service for the period of July 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. Any questions? Dr. Chase?
I just wanted to say what fascinating reading this was. I just was really, I just thought this whole thing about China and which recyclables they'll take and how much we get charged if our recyclables are contaminated was really interesting.
Thank you. 10.05, approval of proposed revisions to Policy 2401 and Regulation 2401-R Code of Student Conduct. Any questions about this item? Dr. Chase?
So I didn't really have a problem with the amendment that was being proposed, but then there were these exhibits that were attached that referred to the cell phone policy. And so I don't know when this board last took up the cell phone policy and whether they want to look at it again, but, you know, since being on the board, I've seen a number of things come up in discipline that relate to how students are using their cell phones during the class, as a parent, receiving phone calls from the principal, talking about how cell phones are used to have people rendezvous during bathroom breaks and things like that. So I'm just wondering if that's something we want to look at.
Well, I'd suggest if we want to look at it, is this going to have to be on that rocket docket because this Code of Conduct gets published this summer? So if there's an interest in the board, we're going to need to send something up on that right away. Ms. Young?
Yeah. I have a very, I have a concern about discipline. Of course, discipline to me means to teach and not to punish. When I look at this discipline, I want to know how we are addressing the inequities of this discipline because when we're looking at, and I know this is sensitive, but when we're looking at black and brown kids, we don't have good representation of resources that could, counselors and teachers to talk to these kids versus just disciplining them. Since I've been on the board and in discipline hearing, I thought every child was coming through discipline there, and they don't because the principals discipline, you know, at each school. And Dr. Kizner has been providing me with statistics, and I'm a little bit alarmed. I know we have an equity committee that we're working with, and it depends on who screams the loudest, and they get, you know, pushed ahead. But, you know, this is a 400-year problem that I'm thinking about here, that we need to do better. And I am still reading on these policies. I just think that there needs to be something in there, and luckily, Dr. Kizner just handed us something about restorative justice today, and I think that we need to have something in these policies where, you know, having restorative practices, and that's fine, but are we planning on training these teachers about these practices? Because it doesn't matter what policy you have to change that adheres and helps, you know, disadvantaged kids, poor kids, disabled kids, that the percentages of higher, that they're being expelled, or, you know, in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. If we don't train the teachers that they need to look at these kids and speak to these kids based on their culture, based on their behavior, based on a bad day that they had, we're going to continue down this path, expelling more black and brown kids than we expel the rest of the population.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Please begin.
I agree with that to an extent. I had my own issue a while ago with a potential year-long suspension of one of my kids. What I've noticed is we've given our administrators a toolbox full of consequences that they can choose from. And for some reason, what I've seen, and I agree with you, is the hand goes into the toolbox, and they pull out the very, one on the very top, which is typically the long-term suspension and expulsion. I won't mention any names, but recently, I've heard from a principal, actually not principal, but an AP on the high school level, did something completely outside of the box this time. She talked to the kids and made a deal with them. You know, "We're not going to, we're not going to do these behaviors again. If you do, I'm going to hold whatever it is in abeyance of, you know, what you've done now in abeyance, and I will give it back to you if you break our little covenant here." And the kids were like, "Wow, this is really cool." And they went back, and they never did it again. So I agree. Do I think there needs to be a change of policy to address it? Probably not. I think the training is a good idea on, you know, these are the tools that we've given you. Use your imagination and, you know, dull them out as appropriate. Don't always go for the most, you know, egregious, you know. It's September, and I'm going to suspend this child for, you know, 10 days and then make the recommendation to suspend for the rest of the year. That's ludicrous. So I agree, I just don't know that we need a policy change to make that happen. I think it's more of a training issue.
I'm sorry, can I rebut for a minute? What I mean about the policy is.
Respond.
Respond, okay. What I mean, we're in agreement. What I mean about the policy, I don't see anything in here that is, we're punishing. So we have a system of accusing the offender, first of all. The justice is focused on establishing guilt. We're ignoring the victim. You know, so we need to change our thought process. So maybe it's more about the toolbox that you mentioned, it's there, they need to use it, but in extreme circumstances, at some point, we need to talk to these kids, may not be in public, maybe separate, you know, reprimand, depending on the climate, like you said. Talk to the child, find out what happened during that day. And I know the teachers are, they're social worker, they're doctors, they're everything, mother, father, they're busy. And so, yes, we need counselors, yes, we need more help, but we just need to change what we're doing. Otherwise, we're not going to get there. There's a correlation between the kids not being in school, being suspended, and how are they going to get increased their academics in science or in math if they're not in school? We need to, I'm not saying that, you know, a kid can be bad, but the percentage of, if you have 50% of students that are white, and then you have 20% of blacks, but 50% of those, 50% of Hispanics, 50% of disabled kids are being suspended, something is just wrong with those numbers. We're doing something wrong. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, I'm hearing observations, but my question is, is there anything that you would like to see changed in the policy? Because these are discussions that would be good to have as a board because I think it's a direction the board can give to Dr. Kizner, what is the expectation of the administrators and the pass-along to the staff? Because, you know, this starts several levels down. But that's a, you know, discussion, we can set up a work session sometime in our short summer, or, you know, perhaps certainly before school gets started, because, you know, if we want to make sure that the administrators are aware of all the tools, because sometimes it may be just easier to take that one on top, and that's not what we're looking for. We're not looking for what's easy. We ultimately need to know what's in the best interest of, you know, the students, but that's all the students. But is there anything that you all would like to see in this policy? And the reason I say that is because the policy is going to be coming back to us at the next meeting. And again, I go on to this publication, but it is, it's critical that we have this Code of Conduct together and ready for when school comes back because we do hold all students and their parents, you know, accountable for it. So if there's any changes you want to see in the policy, you know, I would, I would get them articulated, get them to, send them to Missy and Dr. Kizner, but to Missy so that she can share it with all the rest of us, so we can be looking at that and be ready to talk about it at the next meeting. Ms. Hazard, I think, wants to say something.
This is just conceptual. I'm the one that started the thing. I talked to, or, was the addition of the words "and/or restorative practices." It was not a term of art that I was familiar with, so I'm sure that's why we have our handout. So, but in that vein, on page 4, when we say corrective actions, disciplinary consequences.
The folder went that way.
If restorative practices is going to be one of the three things that we want administrators to go to, are they all going to be on the same line? That's, that's sort of my point. I didn't make it as well this morning when we spoke. But I think if we're saying, because to me, how I read this is that's a follow-on potentially to corrective action and discipline consequences, and I think I'm hearing the board trying to say, we want all three of those to be together.
Yeah, so.
Does that make sense?
Madam Chair, if I, yeah, and I also emailed everybody that also. All right, so if I could just touch upon a couple of comments, I don't want Dr. Chase's statement to feel like, "I said something." They might even listen to me? No, because we were all on our telephones. No, but, so the only thing I would maybe offer to that one is that that really, so the Superintendent Advisory Committee, probably a month does not go by in which the cell phone question is addressed, brought up by staff. And I don't want to give the impression the genie's out of the bottle, we can't put it in, because I never, I never think that way. But I will say that the community has to be part of that conversation when it comes to cell phones because we are not handing out the cell phones to children when they walk in the building. So they're getting it from their families, and different families have different beliefs on the cell phone, the cell phone usage. The forms that you have in front of you does make it clear so that a teacher is the only one that gives permission for that cell phone to be on in his or her classroom. The question then is, how comfortable does a teacher feel to enforce that, and how vigilant is our administration in supporting the teacher that does support that? So the cell phone thing, I don't think in one week's time, you can make a change in staying, starting next year because you think redistricting was interesting. I will tell you, the cell phone conversation will rise to that level. The other thing that I want to say, I totally agree with, I agree with everybody, but I really totally agree with every comment that was made. We do have too many children of different backgrounds, and we're not unique to this in Stafford. It doesn't give an excuse, but it's a national challenge of why do we have more children of color, children with disabilities, English language learners, economic. children with disabilities, English language learners, economic disadvantage. And I think a lot of that has to do with parental advocacy, but that's a whole nother conversation. But I really also believe very strongly what Irene says, I don't think it's a policy issue. I think it is an issue, and we have already began to address this. The administration will tell you, this is on my discussion every time I meet with them. And, and, and I'll invite you for sure at the end of July when we have our two-day leadership retreat, whatever we call it here, where we're going to dedicate a lot on restorative practices and how do we work with children who are struggling. And your example is a great example, which I really do believe we have more of those examples in the schools. Your position, like my position, we tend to get people when it's at the end. You know, there's, there's 29,000-plus kids in the school system. Just by the nature of children, there's going to be things that they're not going to follow, which we would want them to follow. But we end up getting the children where it got to a level where we're seeing the kids that really need maybe a greater intervention. But there is a way we talk to children, and it's as, something that we take for granted. And I use this example at the principal's meeting last week. When, sorry, because I actually really saw this in one of our schools, it doesn't really matter. Child comes into school late, there's two ways of addressing it. "You're late, why are you late? Don't ever do it again." Or, "I'm really happy you're here. Let's get you to class so you could start learning. Our day is better now that you're here." Believe me, that matters. Okay, there's two different approaches. So, I think we have a lot of tools. I've got a toolbox at home, too. Half those tools I have no idea how to use. So I want to work with our staff, and this, as you know, somewhat in my background, is to really begin to say, these are the strategies that we have. Our words count, our behaviors count. And why the restorative practices is important, and believe me, we're so far away from being fully embedded in this, we're just at the beginning journey. It does two things. One, it teaches the child that did something wrong, that they did something wrong, and what's a better way of doing it? But it also honors the victim if there's a victim involved. Sometimes it's victimless crimes, that you, if you yelled, if you pushed somebody, if you hit somebody, right now, they just get punished. There's no expectation, you apologize, that the person knows it. And also, if a principal's spending hours investigating something, well, you, you need to see how that impacted the principal and also how it potentially impacted the entire school, because he or she couldn't focus on it, on what other things they need to do. So, I guess what I'm offering to you is, everything you're right, we're aware of it, and it's not going to change overnight. I don't want to give you an impression it's going to change overnight. But it's definitely, more than on our radar, it's moving into action. And I just shared with you that three years ago, a school board in Harrisonburg got a presentation. And so what do we do? We saw suspensions go down, we saw expulsions pretty much go away, we saw on-time graduation increase, dropout decrease. And we saw staff and students have much stronger relationships. So those are the reasons that I want you to be part of the discussion and part of the training, if you would like, which will be in June. July, when is the date? Well, I'll get...
Okay, you can get us that.
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
You can get that, Doug.
I'm so excited, but I want you to come now.
Do you have something, Mr. Cato?
I, I do, just really quick. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not going to be in, in line with this conversation. I am very, very in favor of implementing restorative justice models and practices into our school. And I'm, I'm on board with everything you guys have said. I'm just kind of veering off into a, a different direction. Real quick, because there's something that I just want addressed, if possible. I know that we're, we have a large amount of, of threats of any, any kind. However, in our policy, I don't see anything about threats of any kind. It's, it's mostly focused on a bomb threat, or a threat of this, or a threat of that. And, and really threats of any nature, first of all, they're becoming more abundant. And, and I'm glad that we have a toolbox and we're going to learn how to implement all sorts of different things as far as the corrective action is concerned. But I would like to see something in here as far as threats are concerned, because they are abundant, they take time, they are concerning for parents. They leave children anxious and uneasy in their school environment. And, and I just, I don't think they're anything to play with or to be, I don't think it's, it's funny or a joking matter or anything in this day and age. And I'd really like to see it addressed a little bit better in our policy, please, if possible.
Madam, Madam Chair, just one final comment that I wanted to have. I want to thank staff and I, for the, for the vaping section. This is such a huge problem in our high schools. I was wondering if we could also think a little bit, can we consider maybe some kind of campaign regarding vaping in conjunction, I know with our counselors, our sheriff's department, or even Stafford Hospital? I mean, they have the health. I have heard about the terrible consequences for some of our students who have asthma, who have gotten involved in this and have been, well, it's a crisis. And I know that that partly involves parental view of that. But there has just been a lot of awful consequences that have happened in our schools. So I'm wondering, maybe Stafford Hospital, some kind of, just some kind of campaign, because, anyway...
Well, you know what? That's something that the Student Health Advisory Committee may want to look into next year.
There you go.
We're always looking for topics. Is Mr. Justice here? Make sure, make sure we get that to Mr. Justice as a potential topic for...
And there is a young man that's been writing to us, and he's been, I responded to him. He would like to be involved. I'm not sure if I remember...
Yeah, he said something about the vaping machines in the bathrooms.
He would love to be involved, because he says that when they go into the bathrooms, he's gagging because of that smell, because that's where they do all this...
Well, we certainly hope he's reporting that to his administrators.
He is, and this is the problem. This is why he wrote to us. And I said I would like him to get involved when we...
So, again, I, I don't, I'm trying to, yeah, we could, and I, the vaping is ridiculous. It's not good in any arena. I do want to let Jamie know that we will take a look at the language. I, I heard a policy statement there, or, or lack of a policy. So I will, we will work on that to see. That might be something we'll amend for the next...
And I'd ask if there are any amendments to these, because they're on for action. If there's any way, where are they going to be on for information again?
No, we'll do action. We'll, we'll send it to you.
But send that to us in advance. We don't want to get it when the agenda comes out, because that's too little time to be able to review it and give any feedback or raise any questions. So if you could get that to us, you know, earlier rather than later, but not when the agenda comes out, because that's, you know, the weekend before. And with all the activities going on in the schools, and even our calendars are, are filling up almost every night, there's, you know, somewhere we're going to be. So that would be sooner rather than later. But it, it sounds like there's some interest in the board in, in having this discussion. And I think it would be worthwhile, and perhaps before you have your, your leadership conference, it might be helpful for the board to get together, express our, you know, areas of interest, concern, perhaps suggestions for consideration, and then you could follow up and, and share that with the leadership later on.
I, I have a question for Dr. Kizner, Madam Chair.
Okay, is it related to the, to this topic?
Yes, yes. I know these are policies, but like School Board member Egan mentioned, before they reach into the toolbox, is there a process where they have to go? You know, I would like to see some kind of process before they decide to go into the toolbox and take the, the highest one, something there.
Yeah, the answer is, the process is a natural event. Most of it is the teacher and the student, okay? It's the cafeteria worker and the student. It's the bus driver and the student. Ninety, and I'm going to use this from 20 years, and from 1981 being an educator, 95% of the issues get resolved right at that level, okay? Then there are some students, and as you go up the grades, you could imagine it gets a little bit more pronounced, that needs another level. And I, again, just get, it's important that I always have to keep myself, remind myself, again, that when I get an email, you guys get emails, we get a phone call, this one did person, we're hearing somebody who's at that frustration level. And, but, saying that, I'm not going to be dismissive of last year's data that you probably saw, because it went from the equity. This year's data is not showing any improvement that we have. So I don't want to see more white kids get suspended, say, "Okay, now we don't have a gap anymore." Because we got more to lower everybody. Yeah, I just want to see, how do we, how do we make learning so powerful and engaging? Because this is the real answer. Let me give you the real answer. How do we make learning so powerful and engaging that a kid wants to be totally embedded, enmeshed in their learning and doesn't want to miss anything? Because that's what you're going to see. I actually met with a couple of principals, said, "I want us to start plotting where your disruptions are taking place." Because you will see a very strong correlation that will be in places that are not very structured and in places that you will see, we would call, I would call at least, low-impact classes, okay? Because the more advanced and more involved kids are, they want to be there, they want to learn, and disruption... Matter of fact, I've been in a couple of classes in Stafford, to give a shout-out to staff, and I know I'm taking a little long, where I've actually seen the bell ring and kids didn't want to leave. Those classes have no, they don't have disruption. That's what you want to see in every class. North Stafford High School, they know exactly what I'm talking about. I was in some CTE classes, the teacher is, and art classes, the teacher's pushing the kids out, "Got to go, got to go." And they don't want to go. Trust me, I've been in those rooms enough. Point being is, that's, we, it's, we got to hit it on a different angle. We've got to talk about the tier-level support that we've been talking about. You do that right, you'll see disruption go down. Get family engagement, parents involved, you will see disruption go down. And, and so you have to tackle it from multiple pathways. But I think we're all saying, which I really love, and I do thank you, we're not saying punishment, removal is going to... Think of the, the last time you saw somebody in I-95 get a speeding ticket. I know what you did. You did what I did. You went faster because you're thinking that police officer is busy right now. Because what we sometimes say is, if, if that kid gets away with it, then everybody will get away. That's nonsense. That's a silly way of, of thinking. We have to, we're a school system. When a kid misbehaves, we should treat it like a kid got a math problem wrong. We got to help them understand what, why it was wrong and how they could do it right the next time. If we have that mindset, three, four years from now, when we're all sitting up here, we'll be saying, "Wow, remember those data we talked about, 2019?" This is, mark my word on this, it's gone down.
I, I, I look forward to that. But, but I also don't want to forget the cases where there are victims. Because there are victims in some of these, and there need to be consequences. So, I mean, this is all good talk, you know, we're going to engage them, they're not going to do, I'll call it stupid things, because a lot of times I call it guilty of stupidity, what we get in some of these discipline cases, smart kids doing dumb things. And as you get closer to graduation, it escalates. It's, I don't, I don't know what happens, but, but where there are victims involved, you know, we, we, we need to keep that in mind. So that's all I would suggest. So anyway, we'll follow up on that, maybe July, Missy? See if we can set some time, you know, for, for a work session?
Oh, hang 'em, Healy.
That brings us to 10.06 approval of proposed, what did you say?
I said, you know, that some kids were whispering, like, "Hang 'em, Healy." I, I mean, I don't know about, I just heard it.
Hey, I have, I have a heart, Dwayne. But I also, I also want to make sure that people don't think we, you get a, you know, a free, a free ride. You know, first, whatever. You have to take it into consideration, there's all different factors. I, I don't do criminal law, but, but I do, I do believe in, in protecting the victims' rights as well. But the goal is to, to get these kids through school, get a good education so they can move on to whatever path they follow after that. 10.06 approval of proposed revisions to policy 2403, student suspensions and expulsions. And Dr. Kizner, this is your proposal to amend the appeal period.
Yeah, so going back to your statement, Ms. Healy, I think this is where I'm, this is on. So right now, I actually had a parent that raised this question, and I was surprised myself. Kid did something to another student, the expectation that student was going to be out for a day or two. The parent appealed it. 15 days until this appeal could get... So, I'm thinking, wait a minute, the parent has 15 school days, which is really like 20, 21 days? It could be with weekends, which I never heard of in my career. Why do we have such a length of time where if there's something that you feel like the school didn't handle right, five school days seems like a reasonable length of time? We're not saying you don't have an appeal. But to have 15 days says, okay, so if it ends up being no, we're still going to do, you're still getting the punishment, but now you're getting it like four weeks later, three and a half, four weeks later, which in the 101, Behavior Manager 101, it's got to be kind of immediate, okay? And secondly, it goes to the victim. Okay, so the, the kid that was harmed by this other kid, not to the point where the teach, principal felt, I can't really say it's a violent crime. The kid was just getting like a day or two, if that much. But, so he could, I guess there is a state clause, I was talking to Darrell about it. If there is, if this principal feels like the kid's a danger, we could waive, you're going to have to be outdooring. The principal didn't go there, and I would actually agree with that. I don't see this kid as a danger. I saw this kid as making a bad decision. And I'll just say one last thing. Another school, middle school, kids were disruptive in the cafeteria. Principal did a very simple, normal discipline. You're eating at another table closer to the staff. The principal shares with me, the parents appealed it. And they couldn't now eat? I said, "What? You could appeal as a parent a lunch table discipline?" And the answer was, "Yes." So I'm saying, we got to get back to some level of normalcy, and we got to teach these kids. I'm, I don't want the hammer, I don't want kids overly... But I also think there is something that, in, in life, there's rules. And, you know, if you don't follow the rule, and it's pretty clear, like throwing food is pretty clear you don't do. You should not have a right to appeal.
Right.
You know, so, so what we're saying is, to make a long story short, five school days, which is pretty typical in most school divisions, that if you have a concern of how we handle it, you appeal it within five school days.
Madam Chair, on that, again, I'm going to go back to, I don't think this is, this is necessarily requires a policy change. I think it, it has to do with, and maybe it does. Raising the bar on what is appealable to the board might be a better solution to it, because whatever we set that bar at, of course, we're going to have to follow it. But my, my opposition to this at the moment is I feel like if we remove number eight in its entirety, which allows for appeals of three days or five days, we are reducing the scope of, of an individual's due process. And I don't think that taking it away from them is fair. I think everybody needs to have a process to go through if they feel like they are, they're not being, you know...
Okay, so that part...
Justice has not been served.
The state policy is 10 days. State code is 10 days.
It says whatever the school policy says.
Right, but we wrote it down, I think, six or more days. I forget exactly what you have here.
More than five.
One and five.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is that let's raise the bar on what people can appeal, instead of taking away their right to appeal something that, you know, is, should be appealable. Not based on days.
We're not saying they can't appeal, we're just saying suspensions 10 days or greater. We're just trying to follow...
Yeah, you are saying they can't appeal, something they can appeal right now. I'm just...
Yeah, that's exactly what I heard.
That's my understanding is, you can appeal it today, but next year, next school year, you won't be able to appeal. Is that not correct? Between six, six and nine days. If you get suspended for six, seven, eight, or nine days.
Up to 10 days, up to nine days, you could not appeal.
Under the proposal here.
Right, right now, it's under, what is it?
Over five days if you can appeal.
So, in a longer-term suspension, the parents still could appeal. We're just suggesting this to be consistent with Virginia law, which is 10 days, that 10 days or greater suspensions, parents could appeal to the school board.
But that's not necessarily true, because it gives us the latitude to do whatever we put in our policy. So if we want to take something that's three days or five days, we can. We're not, we don't, we're not aligning with, with policy, with law. We're, we're, they've given us the latitude to go ahead and shape it any way we want to. So, what I'm saying, and I'm just one person, so I'm just, I'm not going to support this, because I don't, I don't, I think it's anti-constitutional, taking anybody's, anybody's due processes away from, from them is, is wrong, in my opinion. So, no matter if it's three days, 10 days...
I appreciate you saying, but...
So when you say raise the bar...
But remember, they do appeal to Darrell. There is appeal. The parents have an appeal. It's, it goes from the school to central...
It's not what the policy says.
It says it can't come to the board.
Right.
Well, I mean, this is making a change, and it may be something we want to bring to the community. I mean, we don't get that many. When you, when you look at the number of appeals to the board, I mean, in the, in the big picture, with 29,000 students, how many? You know, a couple dozen a year?
It's whatever you guys want. This is not...
Yeah, well, the couple, the dozen a year are those individuals that... Yeah, well, the couple, the dozen a year are those individuals that know about appeals. There's a lot of individuals that don't know about the appeal process, period.
Well, they get a letter. They get a letter spilling out, all those rights.
They get their rights.
Well, hmm.
Shut this off. I mean, if you think, oh, I could talk about this all day, whatever the board.
All right, we'll put that on our summer work sessions as well.
Especially when you get an appeal letter in English.
We better get a couple hours for this one, Missy. We'll just do this by itself. I think it'll, it'll actually be pretty interesting for us.
I just have a question.
Yes, Ms. Hazer.
On the part about, I guess it's page two, and it talks about failure of the parent guardian or adult student to make themselves available for a hearing within, and we've changed it from 15 school days to five school days, then they have waived their right to appeal. When we say make available, and I don't know the state law, can that hearing be done with a parent through Skype or other means, depending on some of the parents? I just want to make sure that, that our process, I'm not, I'm actually not disputing this, but when we say make available, to me is, we have a lot of commuting parents, we have a lot of military parents that might want to be involved, and I don't know if state law allows it, so that's, that's more my question.
Well, I think here you would have, you would have flexibility to decide it. I would just, again, last thing I'll make.
Without good cause, how about?
A teacher that just went through a challenging time with a kid, went through all the referring, and now this kid's back in the room, because the parent appealed, they're not coming for three weeks.
Right.
Okay? And then there, I'm hearing two different things from the board. You know, we want to protect the child, I always agree with that, but there also is the person that was harmed, okay? And so, the balance is, to what we're saying is, that two parts to this change. One is five days to appeal, not three, not 15 school days. Remember, 15 school days with weekends, could be 21 days, okay? And then, school board just be consistent with Virginia code. That came out of, you know, the committee discussion, but obviously, it's the board's final decision.
Well, I do want to take a look at the code, so if you just give me that code section, I can look it up online. I'm not sure if, and I have not looked at this code section, but sometimes what the Virginia says, we cannot, you know, there is a minimum, but we could, we could certainly choose to give more. You know, we would have that flexibility. It doesn't, I doubt that the code says that you can't, you know, that you must have the 10 days. I mean, if we choose to give them more.
You could always go, you can't.
Right, but if we choose to give more, then, then I would think that would be within our discussion. I see Mr. Nelson nodding his head, but I would like to take a look at that. So, maybe you can just send that to the board, so we can take, I mean, if we're saying we want to be consistent with the law, then that's, to me, that is that we are not consistent with the law now. I'm not sure we're inconsistent with the law. We may take, be taking advantage of an opportunity that the law permits us. So, I think that, you know, there's a lot of good discussion here, and, you know, I certainly raising questions for me.
How do we want to move forward for next week? I mean, next board meeting?
Well, but, but, yeah, and then that's my question, is this something we need to rush, a significant change? Because this would be a significant change, maybe the 15 days. I could, I could live with cutting the 15 days available for the hearing if we say, absent extenuating circumstances, or have some provision in there that would permit parents or guardians who are not available to just not lose this, you know, appeal opportunity. Ms. Decatur?
I closed all my stuff down, sorry. I was getting a little ahead of myself, but, so, I would have gone back and looked, but I don't want to open it back up, because I trust that we're about done here. But my initial thought on this is, first of all, when you, when you give a scenario like changing a lunch table, first of all, I think that's a little absurd that a parent would have the want to appeal a decision like that. And it also leads me, first of all, I would like to know, so if it's, what did you say, 10 days or more? So, then what are the behaviors then that warrant a 10-day or more suspension? And then what are the behaviors that they're getting disciplined that is less than 10 days? You know, so it might just be minor things that I'm okay with not allowing an appeal for, such as minor lunchroom incidents that, first of all, when there's a teacher shortage and we're taking the authority away from teachers, it, that's not exactly good workplace practice. I think that teachers need to have the authority to say, you made a mistake, and now you're going to sit next to me at lunchtime, without interjection from a parent, sorry.
Well, you guys would know what comes in front of you now. I mean, it sounds like you don't have many, but you would know which ones are coming to the discipline, I mean, to the school board hearings now. And what I don't know, now, because I haven't asked the question, how many of them were those six to 10-day ones, okay? Are you getting the ones that are predominantly 10 or greater anyway, and that they would have that appeal? So, that homework I need to do more. From my experience, again, boards, you know, got things like, such as weapons, drugs, things of that serious nature. Again, I have, I have an opinion, I don't have, I don't have, I have other issues that I would feel stronger about than this one. I go back to the earlier conversation, making sure kids are treated fairly, and staff are knowledgeable and have the resources on how to best address children who are struggling, either behaviorally or emotionally. So, that's really where I'd rather put more of my focus and energy.
Okay. All right, that's fair. So, I think if any of us want to make any proposals, do you have something you want to add?
No, I just said, I think, I like, I like your idea about kind of talking a little bit more about it, because, you know, after eight years of discipline hearings, I've, most of them are 10 days, number one. Number two is, some parents don't understand that they have a right to appeal.
They have appeal rights.
My thought is that when you come to the board, we have the full packet on the kid, and like you said, if this, if a kid has a pattern of behavior, we can, we'll probably uphold, you know? But if not, we'll give, I think justice is usually served, and we mitigate the days and maybe let the kid walk, or whatever. But the last thing is.
Meanwhile, for graduation.
Walk for graduation, yes, I'm sorry. But the last, but the last thing is.
Break his legs.
Yeah, yeah. But the last thing is, you know, it is, it is always a concern when I'm in the discipline, and they say, well, he had a 10-day or a 15-day, whatever it may be, 10-day suspension. And then, the immediately, they ask for a waiver, or ask for, you know, but then the kid goes right back into the classroom, as soon as that waiver's done. And so, that comes back to victim focus, the stuff that you were talking about with conflict resolution, and all the stuff that I'm sure these words will come back to the smart folks, you know, about how to fix some of this stuff.
Yeah, I would just like to, to thank Mr. Nelson for what he does with respect to this discipline. I think the reason that the board gets so few appeals is because in his hearings, he listens, and sometimes he accepts, sometimes he modifies, and I think he has always made a very special effort to be fair. And I think that thanks to what Mr. Nelson does before these cases, you know, are at the point where the parents have to decide whether to appeal to the board, is a result of the way that he has treated these, you know, all of the cases. So, thank you, Mr. Nelson, I really do. And we've worked together for many, many years, and I don't, I don't think, I think it's kind of like behind the scenes, you know, we only get the final production.
Some don't get to, Mr. Nelson, no.
Well, that's, you know, there's nothing, well, that can be part of the discussion, but I, I'm thinking that, you know, maybe there's, there's some changes that could be made that would not affect the, that would help administratively, which is, say, that you can't have 15 days to appeal, you can have less time to appeal, but you can, at this point, just keep, keep the amount of suspended days as they are, until we have an opportunity to reach out, and, you know, I personally feel this is community.